All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please? Or, excuse me. Before we do that, before I forget, for this meeting, we are going to name Mr. Bassett as our temp clerk.
Clerk pro tem.
Clerk pro tem. All right. At this time, can I have a roll call, please?
You say you can let me get to the safety.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor, let me just situate myself.
Oh, you're fine. Okay. Roll call. Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway.
Here.
Okay. Okay, so she's not online?
When we go into close, would you mind sitting here just seeing if she appears here?
Put her back there.
Okay. All right, in that case.
So, at this time, do I have a motion to go into closed meeting?
Sorry, ma'am.
Under Virginia Code Section, that's all right. Two point two dash three seven eleven A twenty-nine and eight. To discuss the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, offer request to real estate contract discussions. Unsolicited offer, two point two dash three seven eleven A eight, data integrators, and two point two dash three seven eleven A one, to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, former city manager and city clerk's separation of employment, and the contract modification agreement for the interim city manager.
Sorry, ma'am.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Okay. All right, certification rules?
Okay, certification pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one two D. Where only, uh, public business matters, one lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two identified in closed meeting, uh, motion discussed in the closed meeting.
Uh, roll call?
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, moving into our work session this evening, we've got four of them. The first one is Mr. Crocker.
Please, certification without the discussion.
I think your light never came on.
That's why I said something. I've been looking at the light, the light's been on the whole time.
It's not on.
I mean.
It is on.
I mean, it's on now, but it wasn't on when I did it.
I was watching.
It was not on.
I thought you were talking about the speaker light.
Our point of information.
Okay.
Uh, for the city attorney, I had placed the item for, uh, a counselor's request. And according...
I apologize, before we continue, has, has a certification already happened?
Yes. Yeah, we're in the work session right now.
And did, did that carry with all votes?
Yes.
Thank you.
I put a item for a counselor's request on the agenda, which the city attorney had removed. Uh, removing items from agenda in our council rules three oh four, remove items from the agenda. Once a counselor placed the item on the agenda, it can only be removed by the counselor prior to the adoption of the agenda. Once the agenda is adoption, items can only be removed by two-thirds of the vote of all members of council. My item, my counselor request should have never been removed off of the agenda.
Sorry, I apologize, Counselor, is there a question?
Yeah, there was a question.
Would you mind restating the question?
Why was my, how was my item legally removed? According to our rules, it can be challenged, but it was not supposed to be removed.
Sure. Uh, it was removed because, yes, you're, you're absolutely right about what Rule three oh three says.
Three oh four.
Sorry, three oh four, excuse me. But, um, the rules also require that, uh, so Roberts' rules are made a part of law in this city by the city's charter. The city's charter actually brings Roberts' rules into it as a...
That's if, that's if the item is not spoken to, but this, that particular item is spoken to, it's actually in our rules. So, the Robert rules only go forward in effect if the item is not spoken to. And in this case, this item particularly is spoken to, Mr. Attorney.
Counselor, these two are separate considerations. Um, one, one has to do with putting things on the agenda. However, uh, there are certain items that are not able to be put on an agenda, and so this is, this is where Roberts' rules comes into play. And, uh, it's being part of our law, really, within the city, is that, um, the item was a motion to reconsider, and motions to reconsider do not lie for items that have, or for votes that have already resulted in an action, um, being carried out. Because the action had been carried out, it's not a, it's not a proper item for...
Then, then that would be up for a challenge during the meeting. But because of the simple fact that we do have a particular, uh, rule in place about removing the items, the item was already on the agenda. If there needed to be a challenge about something that was already on the agenda, that would be a separate conversation. This is not something that had not been yet added to the agenda, but in this case, in fact, it had already been added to the agenda. So, whether there was discrepancies about it, uh, shouldn't or shouldn't have been added there, it was already added. And again, Rule three oh four speaks to the fact of the things that are already added on the agenda, and removing the item from the agenda could only have been removed by me. It wasn't, it was removed by you.
Sorry, uh, Counselor Holloway, is there a question?
Yes. Why was my item removed off of the agenda after it had already been placed on the agenda? You're speaking to something that was not the question. You're speaking to Roberts' rules in regards to how something can be added to the agenda. This item was already added. And I want to know, why was my item illegally removed after the fact that it was already placed on the agenda? And we have rules that said, removing the item from an agenda, and three oh four says, once the counselor places it on the agenda, it can only be removed by that counselor. My item was removed and not challenged at this meeting. Again, I'll speak to the fact that I believe that this is a small coup, and the very challenge of what we're facing today in removing, uh, the city manager as had been done, which I'll speak to later on, but at this moment, my item should have not legally been removed from the agenda. Is that correct or incorrect? Should my item have been removed according to our rules? I'm not asking a question of, should it have been added? This is the question of, could it have legally been removed according to our rules that is governed by our charter, which is something, the powers that are given to this government, this institution, and this municipality that are given by our, uh, state and Commonwealth of Virginia? Why was my item removed if I did not remove it?
So, I think I understand your question. So, like, an agenda doesn't exist until the clerk publishes it. There is no agenda to have an item removed from until the clerk publishes it.
It was published.
So, as I understand it, the, I, the clerk asked me about the item before publishing the agenda.
No, it was published.
Um, so this goes to the question of whether it can be added to the agenda in the first place. My understanding, when I was asked by the clerk whether this item could be added to the agenda, this was before the clerk published the agenda, and...
It wasn't. It was already added to the agenda, and you said that it had to be removed. The clerk, in fact, an email, which is what I asked you through the email, why was it removed? And I specifically asked you, why was it removed? And you came back and said for two reasons. You said, because I was not a part of the prevailing vote, um, which indeed was correct. And also, I made the statement to you that also Counselor Ellis was not a part of the prevailing vote in February's meeting, because he was absent. In closed session, you said that him being absent marked as a no. So, then my question and statement would be, if people who was completely absent, uh, their votes counted as a no, then we would have to go back and look at a lot of resolutions and a lot of votes, because then you will say the absent counselor vote would actually count, just like, uh, Counselor, um, uh, Stokes not being here tonight. You're telling me that her absence would count as a no? And you told me that, um, you told us in closed session that, uh, because Counselor Ellis was not present in February, he would have been a part of the prevailing side. We had a three to three vote, meaning the vote failed, and the noes would have it according to standards. But you seem like you're participating with the rest of the councils, counselors, and having a small coup and making up rules as you go. I am not asking the question again tonight, Mr. City Attorney. Please, with all morality, with your responsibility before the board, not this board, but your Board for Law, are you answering indeed and fact to me that you had the authority to remove my counselor's request off of the agenda? And it was posted, sir. And I asked you an email, and I can read the email if you prefer. I said, why was my item, my counselor's request, removed from the agenda? And you said, because one, I wasn't part of the prevailing side? Was your answer to me?
Call for a point of personal privilege? Extend the meeting until we can get everything on the agenda?
Uh, I have a floor for a point of information.
So, current, so there's a point of personal privilege, calling for a motion to extend the meeting until we finish all, uh, what's that, until we get to the CCR six?
Eight.
Yeah, six, okay. All right, I'll second it.
Is point of information, is that duly prop, uh, proper in the midst of my...
Yes, motion to extend the meeting can be interjected in the middle of an item.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yeah.
Counselor Day.
Yeah.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Can you state what the motion pays?
To extend the meeting until we finish CCR six.
The vote count was, uh, six in favor, one absent.
And the absent counted as a no? Does the absent count as a no?
The absent is, is simply absent.
Does it count as a no?
The absent is simply absent.
But you told us in the back room it counted as a no, so my question on the day is, is does it count as a no?
I recommended the counselor to avoid disclosing closed meeting material in open session.
The closed meeting material, according to the law, would be if I am, uh, speaking about something that would just be privileged information, in the case where I would be giving information that would be not of the city's best interest to disclose to the public.
My, my advice to you, Counselor, is that, is that, is that that conversation, those items, if you were to continue discussing them out here in open session, you would in fact be advised.
So, let's renew it out in public without specifically talking about what was in closed session. My question is now, is that absent vote of Counselor Stokes, is it considered just absent? Or would it be a no, Mr. City Attorney?
Sure. So, the effect of absent votes, whether, there's a difference between whether they are counted as no votes and whether they have the effect of no votes. I'm sorry that that sounds pedantic, but unfortunately Roberts' rules is, is that thick, and it is rather pedantic.
So, I don't want your personal opinion, I would like according to your standards that you had lifted, according to either state law, state code, our charter, or either the Roberts' rules, not just your personal opinion. Is the absent considered a no, sir?
Sure. For avoidance of doubt, uh, I only speak up here in my guise as city attorney. I do not offer personal opinions. Um, and so the answer to your question is, no, it doesn't count as a no vote, but it has, for certain purposes in Roberts' rules, the effect of a no vote.
The effect of a no vote, and in cadence...
Point of order, uh, your three minutes is up.
This is a question for a point of information, not, this is not a discussion.
Mr. Bassett?
Do you have a point of information? Do we have rules specifically about extending time limits on point of information? This is not a discussion period.
Mr. Mayor, my recommendation here would be that the most expedient thing to do to move forward would be to ask me for a ruling as parliamentarian. After rendering a ruling as the parliamentarian, that ruling is subject to the overrule of a vote of two-thirds of, of council, if council desires.
Okay, all right. I'm asking you for a, uh, ruling as the parliamentarian.
And I answered upon a personal privilege.
Well, I'm asking mine first, Mr. Bassett.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, what is the question being posed?
Is, yeah, he has spoken for over three minutes on his, uh, point of information. Has his time elapsed?
So, actually, uh, when it comes to points of privilege and personal information, there, there, in the rules as they exist, there is not a, a time limit for those. My recommendation is that the actual substantive question in front of council just be put to me for, for a ruling.
So, the substantive question that I'm asking you is, does the absent persons, absence count as a no? I have this particular question because the issue at hand tonight is whether or not in February, Counselor Ellis was on the prevailing side or not.
Okay. So, I just understand the question is, is Miss, is Counselor Stokes...
Not just Counselor Stokes, any counselor. Does the absence count as a no, Mr. City Attorney?
Again, this is a question because there's a difference between, between the, the, what it is and what effect it can have.
I wasn't asking for explanation, I just wanted a yes or no answer. Does it, or does it not count as a no, Mr. City Attorney?
Again, this is a question that can't be answered in the hypothetical. It needs to be answered for a specific circumstance. I, I, I can't make a ruling as to what Roberts' rules says about the question that you're asking me, because there's not a single answer.
So, then what be, what would be your authority basis that you're answering in your statement of opinion if our charter specifies how we govern this city? And this municipality is governed by our laws. In the absence of something out of our charter or rules, the Robert rules would then take place according to our rules. And right now, the question on the floor, and sir, you are digging a place where you seem to be more participating in this small coup with the prevailing counselors. And my question is simple. I want a yes or no answer. Does the absent of a counselor determine that their vote is no, sir?
It, I'm, I'm sorry.
You said no, you said, it doesn't say no. It's either yes or no, it is no, or it's just expected or assumed as a no. It's not the law. According to Roberts' rules, I want to know, because it's absent in the charter, does this absence of a counselor, in this case, February's meeting, Counselor Ellis was absent, sir, absent? Did Counselor Ellis, or any counselor being absent, does our absence count as a no? If I'm not in this meeting, we would then have to go back to several meetings where we have put resolutions in, after resolutions, ordinances, after ordinances in, over and over and over. And are you saying to me tonight, Mr. City Attorney, are you saying to this people and to this council that my absence or any other council's absence, their, uh, the ascending vote would be a no because we are absent?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I, this is not a request for a ruling that, that, that I can understand or, or respond to.
Are you incompetent to the fact of being able to answer appropriately?
Excuse me.
This is appropriate questions. Are you incompetent to the fact of being able to answer the question?
Do I have a motion to overrule the parliamentarian's, uh, ruling in, in discussion on this?
So, are you asking for a waiver? Are you asking for a waiver?
Yes. All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner, and I'll second it. All right, roll call, please.
One, sorry, one moment, I apologize. Uh, the, as I understand it, the motion on the floor is to overrule the parliamentarian in his, my...
Over the time limit rule of three minutes.
Over the time limit rule of three minutes, right. So, I, I rendered an opinion as parliamentarian that when it comes to a, to a point of order that there is not...
No time limit.
There is not a, a three-minute time limit. Now, we have a motion on the floor to overrule that ruling as parliamentarian.
And to end the discussion.
Uh, okay, so, uh, who's made the motion?
Vice Mayor Joyner, and I seconded it.
So, is a waiving of the rules to override the parliamentarian? So, there's a waiver of parliamentarian rules tonight and also to end the discussion, am I correct?
Counselor Harris?
No.
Uh, actually, I would say yes. You're waiving parliamentarian rules.
Uh, Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yeah.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Holloway?
This is my under, uh, point of information. We're voting for, to waive a parliamentarian rules and to end the three minutes.
We, we are voting to overrule my ruling as parliamentarian that there is not a three-minute limit on discuss, discussion of points of order.
You're overruling that, that there is not?
That's correct. My, my, my opinion to this council is that there is not a time limit on, on points of order.
All right, so the overruling of your, of your...
If the, if the, if the motion to overrule me carries, then, then this discussion will be ended.
Yes. So, you, so you're just overruling your opinion, but the, is he overriding the counselor rules as well?
I, I'm, I'm certainly not overruling myself. Uh, coun, counsel, I'm considering whether to do so.
The, please continue with the roll call, we've passed discussion.
Counselor Holloway?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, moving on to...
Uh, sorry, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Uh, so, the parliamentarian has been overruled, there's a three-minute limit on this discussion, uh, discussion has to end.
Okay. All right, moving on to work sessions, Mr. Crocker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Mike Crocker, Public Works Director. Uh, brief report out on the city arborist position and the grant from the Virginia Department of Forestry. Uh, it's been a number of months ago, the city pursued a grant from DOF for funding for an arborist position. Uh, the city was successful in obtaining that grant, uh, in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand four hundred and three dollars to cover salary benefits, equipment, supplies for this position. Uh, no cost share required from the city. Uh, the position's been included in the FY twenty-six budget, so no formal action is required tonight for this position. Uh, the position's to be housed in the Department of Public Works, but shared with planning and development. Uh, the position will assist with Hopewell's tree strategies and help us reach some of our tree canopy goals, um, the six objectives we've identified through that strategy. Um, and that's really all I have to report out, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Crocker? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Ward?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'll apologize upfront, I'm gonna be up here quite a few times this evening presenting various things to you, so, um, we'll go ahead and just get started. Uh, my first work session here is a conditional use permit request to construct a, a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot, parcel zero one four one two five two, located on Klingman Street. The applicant is Landova Properties LLC. They are an agent of the owner. Um, this property is located in Ward five and Zoned R two. The map on the left shows the general location of this property, and the map on the right is an aerial view of the property in question. Minimum lot size in R two is seventy-five feet wide and seventy-five hundred square feet total. This particular parcel is only fifty feet wide and, uh, four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. So, the nonconformity is both in the width and the, uh, total size. The applicant's proposing to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling, it's three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, one thousand four hundred and fifty-six feet. Uh, you've got front and right elevations of the proposed new home, and rear and left elevations of the proposed new home. Uh, the proposed dwelling is, is quite a bit larger than the average single-family dwelling in the neighborhood. Uh, they're proposing, uh, fourteen hundred fifty-six square feet, the average is twelve hundred sixty-seven. Uh, vital siding will be on the new house, and it's consistent with other homes in that neighborhood. And of course, uh, the new house will meet all R two district setbacks. Staff recommends approval of the CUP with the following conditions, uh, the twelve-inch minimum eaves on all roof edges, a twenty percent... Uh, the twelve-inch minimum eaves on all roof edges, a twenty percent tree canopy, uh, installation of a driveway of asphalt or concrete, uh, brick or stone foundation on all four sides, uh, foundation plantings, and that the final constructed home will be in substantial conformance with the elevations that I showed you, uh, just a few minutes ago. Uh, we did have one person speak out against the application at public hearing. It was an adjacent property owner. He was claiming that the construction of a new home on this property would inhibit his access to his rear yard, uh, which means he traverses through this property to access the rear of his property. Planning Commission actually recommended denial of this conditional use permit application uh, for the two reasons listed here, that they, they felt the lot was too small and that the house was not consistent with other properties. Uh, this is just a work session, so not acting, asking for any action this evening, but I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ward?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is there any other, um, I know there was an issue with the driveway. Was there anything with the builders just to try to accommodate that?
Um, the concrete.
Mm-hmm, the slab.
Slab that's already there. Um, the, I did speak with the applicant about that, you can kind of see that. Is your question relating to the fact that it, it actually is on two properties?
Yeah, it's like that, you know, it wouldn't be able to, you know, two cars wouldn't be able to park on it.
Their plan would be to, to widen that, so it still would remain a shared pad, but they would add more on their side so that they could fit, uh, additional vehicles actually on their property.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Ward? All right, seeing no lights, thank you. All right, moving on to the next one.
So the next item is zoning amendment request to amend Section A of Articles Ten, Eleven, Eleven A, Twelve, and Thirteen to potentially add the issuance of a conditional use permit to auto-related uses in those dis, in, uh, those districts. You may remember that, uh, this is a city council-initiated request. These districts, um, are, these districts exist in, um, almost all the wards of the city, one, two, five, six, and seven. And the applicable, applicable ordinances, as I mentioned before, are Ten, Eleven, Eleven A, Twelve, and Thirteen. And the request is to add conditional use permit issued by city council to auto-related uses in these districts. So, uh, we have uses in our B Two District, or a use in our B Two District that states automobile and truck service establishments and rental agencies. And then in B Three, B Four, M One, and M Two, essentially is the same, uh, in the B Three and B Four, where sales is added. And then in M One and M Two, uh, it's more the intensive auto-related, uh, use of, uh, painting and bodywork. These auto-related uses are permitted in all commercial and industrial districts except V One, which is our downtown. So that comprises approximately, um, ninety-six point eight percent of all commercial and industrial land in the city. So there are potential impacts with auto-related uses, and, um, they don't necessarily occur with every single use in the city, but they are potential impacts. Uh, parking issues, outside storage of and/or display of product, noise and air pollution. There are concerns about waste disposal, uh, potential safety risks with fire, um, aesthetic concerns, and potential increased risk of theft and vandalism. Uh, we did have one public comment at the Planning Commission public hearing. Uh, a citizen spoke, uh, and questioned the need, uh, of whether a CUP was even needed because these impacts that I just mentioned, uh, could be dealt with either through a noise ordinance or code enforcement type issues. I just wanted to make a note that any changes to the ordinance will only apply to any new uses. This zoning amendment changes are not retroactive. They will not affect any, uh, permitted auto-related uses in the city, uh, that are currently there. But by adding the CUP requirement, we would be able to receive public input upfront if somebody wanted to open an auto-related use. It's a proactive measure, um, because you can mitigate potential impacts upfront instead of relying on enforcement on the back end. And it would allow, uh, staff and city council to address site-specific conditions more easily. Lastly, uh, we could place closer scrutiny on parking and layout, uh, but both on-street and off-street. Staff recommends, uh, updating the ordinance and, uh, adding the CUP requirement to the two auto-related uses. This would simply just be an interim measure because we are currently undergoing a complete zoning ordinance update, um, which we anticipate would be adopted next year. Uh, probably about this time, maybe a little bit later this time next year. Planning Commission recommends approval of adding the CUP requirement as well. Again, just a work session item, no action, but I am available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ward on this item? Seeing no lights? Last one.
For now. Okay. All right, I'm gonna apologize again in advance. This one can be a little bit lengthy, but I'll get, try to get through it as quickly as I can. So tonight will mark the start of our thirty-day, uh, public comment period for our community development block grant program. We're required to do this every year, uh, prior to the adoption of our annual action plan. Quick overview, uh, Hopewell is an entitlement community, so we automatically receive funding from HUD every year. Uh, HUD's mission is to create strong, sustainable, and inclusive communities, quality, affordable homes for all. And the expenditure of CDBG funds must, uh, meet one of three national objectives, either the benefit to low-to-mid-income persons, the prevention or elimination of slums and blight, or urgent need, which typically falls under, uh, natural disaster. The city's received approximately one point five million dollars, uh, since twenty nineteen. Uh, we don't know what our funding allocation is yet for this year. We anticipate that number being released, um, sometime this week, actually. But we anticipate it'll be around two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That would be in line with previous years. So for our annual action plan this year, we've got actually three separate pots of CDBG money, uh, for lack of a better description. We've got our annual allocation. We've got unspent money from previous years. And then we also have a little bit of CDBG, uh, COVID-related money that remains unspent and needs to be spent, or the federal treasury will recapture that money in September of next year. So for our annual, uh, allocation, we're estimating two hundred and forty-five thousand. Unspent funds that date back to twenty eighteen, total two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And the unspent CV funds are thirty-one thousand, two oh two. Um, just real quick, before I dive into other, uh, actual funding recommendations, you'll see under each section that there are different rules that are applied to the different funding streams. Get a little complicated, and get a little confusing. So if, if some of this doesn't make sense, please stop me and I'll, I'll try my best to explain. So with our annual al, allocation, that's what we're gonna start with first. This is the money we get every year. Twenty percent of it goes to administration of the program, that's automatic. We are limited to a, to, uh, fifteen percent cap, so we're only able to spend a total of fifteen percent of our annual allocation on public service projects. So we had four applicants this year. The four being Hebron, Healthy Families, the James House, and Pretty Purpose. Three of those four, uh, have been funded previously by the city through this program. Pretty Purposed is a new one, um, that we are proposing. They actually did apply last year, uh, but had some issues with their application. Uh, staff's recommending, uh, you can see the funding recommendations on the left-hand side. That totals thirty-seven thousand, approximately fifteen percent. Housing rehabilitation in the city of Hopewell tends to, uh, account for the balance of the funds, um, that don't go to public service or administration. We had two applicants this year, they tend to be the same applicants we get every year. Uh, staff's proposing a hundred thousand dollars to project homes where they'll be able to provide, uh, emergency home repair to eligible owner occupants, uh, five units, and forty thousand to rebuilding together, uh, to do two units. And then we have a balance, um, my numbers don't match there, it should be seventeen thousand. Uh, we had a request from Hopewell Economic Development and Tourism to provide, uh, capital funds that would go towards, uh, the construction of a, uh, land connection from the Riverwalk. Um, at this point, um, this is the balance of, uh, annual allocation funds, so it'd be seventeen thousand dollars to go to this project. But you'll see this project again, uh, come up on the unspent fund side. Which is where we get to here. So this money dates back to, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, it's just leftover money that wasn't spent for whatever reason. Uh, for several reasons, in fact. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, staff's proposing to put towards the land extension connection at the Riverwalk. So it'd be two fifty-eight, um, from unspent funds and seventeen for the annual allocation. Uh, there is a potential risk of recapture of unspent funds with what's going on in Washington. Um, and some uncertainty there. I know that Congress is taking a second look at the CDBG program as a whole. Um, I don't wanna say we're gonna lose it, but we just don't know at this point. Lastly, we have some CDBG COVID-related funds that remain unspent from twenty twenty. These do not affect our public service cap. We have thirty-one thousand, two hundred and two dollars remaining. We need to spend it before September of next year, or the federal treasury will recapture that money. We are proposing to provide that money to Catholic charities for homeless, uh, services outreach. It's a program they have undertaken in Hopewell before. Uh, it was a program that was expanded during COVID. And this money, we think, because it has to be COVID-related, uh, homeless outreach is one of the very few types of projects we could consider even funding at this point. So there, there's a total here, um, of our draft annual allocation budget. You can see it continues here. The CV funds to Catholic charities. The unspent funds to the Riverwalk, and then the annual allocation before that comes to about five thirty-four, two oh two. Lastly, we are at the start of our five-year consolidated plan that we're required to develop for HUD. You'll see that our priority needs are on the left, our goals and project types are on the right. Um, this is a plan for twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. We don't anticipate these priority needs or goals, uh, to change substantially between last, the last five-year plan and this new one. Our public comment period starts today, runs for thirty days. Uh, you can find this information online. Uh, we can accept comments through email and, uh, through the regular mail, uh, even in person. Um, and we will be coming back and doing a public hearing at a later date. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ward? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move into our regular meeting, and I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Holloway?
Okay, all right, we're gonna move into our, uh, prayer. Uh, since we do not have, uh, Pastor Blow this evening, uh, we do have Apostle, uh, Whitech, um, to do the invocation, and then the Pledge of Allegiance will be done by myself. Please rise.
Let us borrow his. Most gracious eternal Father, Lord Jesus Christ, thy eternal God, the maker of the heaven and other universe, the ruler of all nations. Father, we stand here today, asking you for guidance for your people, for the city of Hopewell. Asking you for guidance for our nations. Father, we pray for our Congress, we pray for our sinners, and we pray, oh God, for this council board, that they would make sound decisions for this city. Oh God, that there will be justice among these people. Father, we bind every hindering spirit that tries to rise up and bring about division. Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, be glorified in the midst of this meeting. We bind every spirit. We cast down every spirit that is contrary to you. That peace may abide in the city of Hopewell. And we'll praise you, and we'll glorify you for it being done in Jesus' name. Amen, amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Father for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
All right, this time, is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda? All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Okay.
Bring up the, the, again, now, the discussion point, that my item was removed from the agenda, my counselor's request. Uh, that my counselor's request was removed from the agenda, and I did not get a, uh, direct answer to my question. And it is apparent to these people. Uh, you know, I come for peace, we all came for peace, we came for unity, night. But scripture is clear, here turned mother against daughter and father against son. We came for peace, but we will start war. It is not in any way, shape, or form appropriate and legal, according to our rules, that we could remove a counselor's request off of the agenda. I also had a point of information, and I looked up on the state's website for the point of personal privilege, which is not by our state laws, subject to a vote, that cannot be voted against when I am in and expressing the uncomfortability representing a personal issue when I am trying to do my best in my position to represent the best interest of my ward and this city. Inserting my point of personal privilege, I have concerns with the matters that were previously stated. And my question still remains presently. Does a counselor's absence, is it taken as a vote of no, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, my, my ruling on this as parliamentarian was overruled in this conversation.
That was a point of inform, that was a point of information. I am now at a point of personal privilege, which the Virginia statute said cannot be voted against or upon.
My, my understanding, Mr. Mayor, is that this is, this is the same topic that has been ended by an overruling of my, of my, uh.
The topic was a question of point of information. This is a point of personal privilege when I have personal concerns.
The parliamentarian has ruled, Mr. Holloway?
Are you ruling against my personal point of privilege, sir?
Sorry, there, there is no more ruling for me. My, I'm just advising the council that, that this is an item that has been ended by an overruling of my ruling as parliamentarian.
Okay, so. Okay, so then I insert a point of information to my next question that you can insert your opinion on, particularly, and in fact specifically, was the vote from February's meeting that came up for reconsideration on May first of this year, for reconsideration.
Mr. Holloway, your time has expired.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing their lights, roll call, please.
Excuse me, Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. What is the vote for this? To adopt the agenda?
No.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Is there a motion to adopt consent agenda? All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor, excuse me, by Counselor Day, seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing their lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
She's in.
Oh, oh. Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway.
No.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, moving on to information presentations, Ms. Jordan.
The vote on the consent agenda was five in favor, one against. And the seventh, one counselor was absent. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Today, I'm reviewing the third quarter financials for the city of Hopewell. So we're gonna review citywide, general fund, enterprise, schools, and departmental budget to actials for third quarter, as well as an overtime report by department, collection report for data integrators, accounts payable and debt service, projected cash flows for fiscal year twenty-five, and reports from the treasurer, as well as an ACFR update. Citywide revenues for third quarter are trending one-point-eight-zero-eight or two-point-three million dollars higher in twenty-five versus twenty-four. Expenses are trending two-point-twenty-six percent higher, or two-point-six million, for twenty-five versus twenty-four. Key due dates for the city, the next one being June for the second half of the real estate. Treasurer's office has sent out about ten thousand delinquencies, personal property bills, estimate about two-point-two million. Next week, they will be sending out roughly six thousand real estate bills for the second half, as well as thirty PSC bills and thirty mills and machinery and tools bills. This is the citywide, more detail, we have on the side, the right-side comments for each category within the revenues and expenditures. Do we have any questions so far? General fund, budget to actials. General fund for third quarter is trending eight percent or one-point-two million lower in revenues for twenty-five versus twenty-four. There was a decrease in PSC, personal property and PNI, as the due date was changed to March seventh. So it's kind of lagging on the collection piece of it. Expenses for twenty-five are trending point-five or four-point-seven higher than twenty-four. The next due date is June for the city of Hopewell. What we have also started to do is project out for the end of the fiscal year where we think we're gonna land for twenty-five. So for twenty-five, we're projecting sixty-eight million, seven forty-nine, and expenses at sixty-five million, four eighty-five. For revenues over expenditures of three-point-two and a positive. Enterprise funds for third quarter is trending three-point-six or two-point-four higher revenues versus twenty-four. A lot of that comes from on-time billing versus last year. Expenses for twenty-five are trending nine-point-nine or eighty-four thousand less in expenses. Revenues show reflection of on-time billing versus last year, and expenses decrease stem from the reduction of emergency repairs compared over last year. Any questions so far? Schools, schools for third quarter is trending three-point-six or five-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand lower in revenues for twenty-five versus twenty-four. Slight decrease in federal funding and decrease in charges for services to cafe, and a slight increase in state funding received. Expenses are trending two-point-nine or four thousand higher in twenty-five versus twenty-four. Our collection rate for data integrators for the month of March was about a hundred and four. They had a lot of additional collections on past due accounts, which makes the collection rate look higher. Department to actual budget. Overall, the city is trending about sixty percent, we should be roughly about seventy-five for the end of March. The only other departments would be Circuit Court, but that's, excuse me, it's late fall. The city assessor, that was coming from additional consultants as we had the reassessment this year. So we had the, any appeals and stuff come through. We have the city manager's budget that was due to RBG consultants. Economic development was the rebates, that was a lump sum, but it should balance itself out by the end of the year. Information technologies is due to IT contracts. Again, we're paying in a lump sum, and time over time, it'll balance itself out by the end of the fiscal year. And Raina was repairs and maintenance. Public Works was fuel. Overtime by department, we have engineering, finance, fire, garage, IT, police, public works, recreations, refuse, sewer operations, share, stormwater, and water renewal. Our accounts payable, we processed over twelve-hundred-and-ninety-five invoices and paid a total of five-point-three million dollars. And we took care of our debt for the sewer of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Projected cash flow, we are projecting to have roughly twenty-four million dollars in the bank account. This is just in the bank account, this is not included in investment accounts at the end of the fiscal year.
This is just general fund.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot to take that. So update, the next person you're gonna hear from is Mr. David Foley for the twenty-one ACFR. We are trending on time for twenty-two, it is due to be completed in June. Twenty-three will be completed in September, and twenty-four will be completed in December. Okay?
While you're there, talking about the audits and its completion and celebration, as Mr. Bob had rendered unto us, that the city of Hopewell should celebrate.
Yes.
Because it indeed, in fact, and while under the auspices of the lead Dr. Menker, had completed-
Two of the five outstanding-
Correct.
Two thousand and twenty.
And I think that is something to celebrate, which this council has been trying to hold as if this administration has not gone forward in this job. So that is something that the city of Hopewell should celebrate. Thank you.
And they have two unmodified opinions, so yes, that is a great.
Absolutely, thank you.
Stacy, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With regard to the third quarter, in public works, something has been brought, and you might have the answer to this, Mr. Mayor. Paving, where are we, I mean, is there a paving project out there? I mean, is paving going on as part of any kind of a regular expense? I mean, that you're seeing on most of those grants, what's the pavings going on right now? There's some things that are going on in Manchin Hills right now, where are we at on those paving projects?
Yeah, so there's, you know, Mr. Crocker, you know, just correct me if I'm wrong.
He's gone.
Oh, he's left, okay.
But we do have quite a few projects going on right now for paving. That was something Mike and I discussed prior to the end of the fiscal year to take care of some VDOT money that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, yeah, do we have a listing of that, of those projects?
I can probably get it for you, yes ma'am.
Yeah, I appreciate that, okay, thank you.
The two that are outstanding are Manchin Hills, Affomatics Heights, and then over in Mr. Day's ward around Danville.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to the twenty-one ACFR presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is David Foley, I'm a partner with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates, and I was a partner in charge of the city's financial audit for FY twenty-one. And we have completed that audit, so here to present the results of that to you all. Before I get into the results of the audit, just would like to give a brief overview of the audit that we do. As part of the financial statement audit for the city, it's really three main pieces to that audit. One is, of course, we audit the city's financial statements to make sure that the city's financial statements have been prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The other two pieces of the audit that we do are done in accordance with government auditing standards. One of which is, in addition to just looking at the numbers themselves, we gain an understanding and review the internal controls that the city has over its financial reporting. And in certain instances, we do this for the purpose of designing our audit procedures. And then in certain instances, we will test these controls to see if they are operating as they were designed. And then the third piece of the audit is the federal compliance piece, which is done in accordance with uniform guidance. So anytime locality or organization expends over seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in federal grant funds, you have to undergo this single audit as part of the financial statement audit. So as part of the audit, OMB provides a compliance supplement with a list of compliance requirements that the city has to comply with, city and schools have to comply with when they're expending a federal grant program. So as part of the audit, we go through that. So those are the three main pieces of the audit that we do. So as such, included in the annual comprehensive financial report, there are three different reports from us that communicate the results of the audit. The first report from us is in the front of the report, it's on number page six. And this is our independent auditor's report. And then this report is where we state we did perform an audit on the city's financial statements. And it is where we issue our opinion on the financial statements. And we have, for FY twenty-one, issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. Meaning that the city's financial statements have been prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And this is a second consecutive year the city's had an unmodified opinion on the financial statements with the work of the Robert Bob Group and Jack Reagan and his team. The other two reports from us are in the back of the report. The first report back there is on page one-hundred-and-fifty-one. This is our report on the city's internal controls over financial reporting. As in past years, we did note material weaknesses in the city's internal controls over its financial reporting. The details of those findings are a few pages back, they start on page one-sixty. But again, these findings are very similar to what the city had in its prior financial report. And you know, as we are working through these older years, you know, because these weaknesses were in existence during those older years, you'll continue to see these as we work through the various years of the audit. But again, the theme of these findings are, you know, reconciliations, monthly, doing monthly reconciliations, timely bank reconciliations, reconciliations over receivables, taxes receivable, enterprise funds. But again, these are similar findings is what we've had in the past. And then the third and final report from us is two pages over. This is our report on the city and schools compliance with its major federal grant programs. This report was claimed we noted no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses in the city or schools' compliance with its federal grant programs. No instances were noted, no instances of non-compliance were noted as part of the uniform guidance audit. So again, that report was clean. So that's all I have related to FY twenty-one, is we have wrapped up FY twenty-one. We're heading into starting FY twenty-two's audit right away. I'm actually starting that audit this week. We've received a significant amount of information already from the cities and schools related to FY twenty-two. Those have been uploaded to our portal. So we will start working through the FY twenty-two audit again, starting this week. And then we will continue, we have been having and will continue to have monthly update meetings with city management to keep management abreast of our progress and any outstanding items that we need. So we continue to work with the city on that. Again, our goal is to have FY twenty-two completed by the end of June. That's all I have, but we haven't answered any questions.
All right, Vice Mayor Joyner?
I do have one question, it has to do with these material weaknesses, and it's something, Ms. Jordan, you may be able to address, it was mentioned earlier in the evening about the fact that we do still have some of these weaknesses that are gonna have to be addressed moving forward. I mean, do you, I mean, is this gonna be a problem? I mean, do we have a plan to address these issues? I'm just concerned, you know, I wanna make sure we get to where we need to be.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. So majority of it is really stemming from the lack of reconciliation back then. So while we're doing on-time reconciliations, that should resolve some of those party problems.
Okay.
Especially when it comes to the cash.
Okay, the cash reconciliation. I also noticed here the Beacon Theater, I noticed some things that said they're managed by a third party, and they're not providing a detailed format sufficient to complete accurate financial statements. I mean, is that a concern for us going forward?
Hopefully, it will not be, the Robert Bob group's work was in prior to what's coming to be taken over. But we've been in contact with the Beacon Theater, we're staying on the same board.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be the same with the council, the EDA, at first, EDA wanted us to find this apartment to take on the responsibilities of their accounting. But I think they have decided to go higher.
They did, well, Robinson Farmer Cox just completed the audits for the EDA.
They did.
You all, you worked with us on our EDA audits, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Mine's not a question, but more of a comment for Ms. Jordan and Mr. Rogers. Now that we've got the twenty-twenty-one audit, let's, you know, do exactly what we did with twenty-twenty, and let's go ahead and do a diagnostic bond rating test to see where we are. I think it would be, you know, good for us, and then that way we can continue to monitor, you know, what it's gonna, hopefully anticipating what it's going to look like going to look like, uh, once we get fully caught up. Any other, uh, questions or comments? All right, seeing none? All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to, uh, communications from citizens. Uh, Mr. Passett, will you please read the statement?
Of course. A communication from citizens, period, limited in total time to thirty minutes is part of the order of business of each regular council meeting. All persons addressing the council shall approach the microphone, give their name and, if they reside in Hopewell, their award number, and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any question must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed, subject to appeal to a majority of city council under rules four oh five and four oh six.
Okay. You mind reading out the first person?
Yes, of course. Our first sign-up is Reverend William Keen.
Good evening. Uh, Mayor and City Manager and Vice Mayor and other council person. My name is Reverend William Avon King. I represent the National Movement for Civil and Human Rights, and also I am the State President of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. Our headquarters is in Atlanta, Georgia. Our Chairman of the Board for the National Movement is Dr. Moon. Our President is Bishop Samuel Conyers. I'm honored to be in your city, which is a city that I have, have some history in over the years with Dr. Curtis Harris. I've actually marched in this city. What has brought me to your community is a concern that has reached, uh, national dialogue and national attention. We believe that all men are created equal and endowed by the Creator with certain and eligible rights, the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We believe in equal protection under the law. Hopewell should not get caught up in the whirlwind of racism that is trying to blow in America and stir up old debris of oppression. All citizens must stand up against injustice. Dr. Martin Luther King saying justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere.
Amen.
And so we are here because, Dr. King also taught us that we cannot become silent about things that matter. I mean, things that matter to anyone. They are important, we can't overlook anyone. And so I'm here because we believe the government is, we the people. All citizens must stand united for justice and equality. And what is happening here, and I've just been here this, today, and glad to be in your city. Hopewell at one time was a city where, uh, officials from Danville, Virginia would send down council people here to see your school. Uh, you had reached a, a milestone. You had a black police chief. And, uh, I served in the firefighter. I'm a member of the International Association of Firefighters. In our city, you couldn't vote. You could run for council, but if you were captain or below. But when you became into Battalion Chief of Management, you couldn't run. It was considered a conflict of interest. And on conflict of interest matters, you were to, uh, abstain. So I was honored to know that this city had reached that great milestone. So I'm here today to encourage you that we, the people, should try to reason together.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, if anyone have any questions for me, uh, before I sit down. And I would like to say that, if you know the history of our organization, like I said, I was invited here today. I hope that you resolve the matter that I do not have to return.
Excuse me, sir, uh, Mr. Harris?
I, you know, I, I, I'd like to make a motion, just a personal, personal, uh, privilege.
Yeah, well, you can make a motion.
I'd like to make a, make a motion that we waive the rules to allow, uh, this gentleman to finish his conversation. He came here tonight all the way from Danville, Virginia, in support of, uh, our effort here in Hopewell. So I'd like to make that motion.
A second. Okay. The motion on the floor is made by Councilor Harris and seconded by, uh, Councilor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights?
Yes, I have something to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yes, I, you know, I'm gonna be okay with that. I just wanna make sure that we do leave enough time to let other people talk, because you're sure there's gonna be other people that have had things that they've wanted to say as well.
There's, there's fourteen signed up.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm fine with that, I just wanna make sure we do, we have time for everybody.
We just have to, we just have to.
You can note my vote as yes. So. Can you finish wrapping up in like one or two minutes?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I do wanna say that, uh,
All right, hold, hold on one second, we just gotta do the vote. So, Mr. Harris, are you okay with, for saying another two minutes?
I'm all right.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to allow the gentleman two more minutes to speak.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joy, uh, cer- excuse me, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
I apologize.
Hey, go ahead.
I'm gonna start now?
Yes.
All right, um, LOV is, is the word love. It's an acronym for Lead Organize Vote Every Time. Let out our voice, elect. And as I was saying, that I hope that I don't have to return to your city. I have organized with SCLC voter registration campaign, sit-ins, marches, in many communities. I've marched all over the United States. Edmund Pettus Bridge, I've marched on Washington. I've sit-in. And what I'm observing here is where my concern is, is that if we allow this atmosphere where people think that it's this win of where you can be fired without cause, when you fire somebody without cause, it creates a cause. And I'm hoping that you understand clearly where I'm coming from. I don't think it's in your best interest in, in the city and for the people to not resolve this matter when you have national tension. And like I said again, I wanna leave you this, I don't sense my minutes up, I'm timing myself. Equal protection.
Equal protection.
Under the law.
Under the law, sir.
Equal protection under the law. That means if I break in your car and the law said thou should not steal, you should be protected, your car. If I, if it said thou should not kill, and I kill whether I'm short, tall, ugly or beautiful, the law says thou should not kill, equal protection under the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next sign-up is William McGee.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's, uh, Minister William F. McGee, and I'm the President of the Richmond Chapter of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, an organization started by Dr. Martin Luther King. Dr. King, along with Reverend Dr. Curtis Harris, spent many a day here in Hopewell, making sure that we had justice for those who deserved justice. I can say to you right now, Hopewell doesn't wanna go back to the days of Dr. King. You don't wanna go back. You've made great progress. You've gotten some things done. I have four grandchildren here in the schools of Hopewell. And when we compared the schools near North Chesterfield where we live to the schools of Hopewell, people saying, are your children going to Hopewell? I said, did you look at the scores, the test scores? Did you look and compare them to the school? Hopewell does better than the schools in Chesterfield where my children were going before. And so I was kinda proud of the fact that Hopewell's made a lot of progress. Hopewell's made, you just, you just don't wanna go back to the days when people have the animosity believing that your decisions are based on racism. You don't wanna go back to that. Because this, you don't wanna go back to that. This city can move forward, but you cannot move forward if you adopt a policy of secret, secretly penalizing people, making it appear that your decisions are not done in the light. Your decisions have to be done in the light. If you have a problem with those people, let it be known so it won't be believed by some people that it was based on racism. Be honest with yourselves, be honest with the public, be honest with the city. Hopewell has made a lot of strides, and you don't wanna go back to the past. Thank you.
I believe the next one is Roger Saunders. Have I, pause, have I mispronounced the name? Not here. We have Janice Denton.
Yes, I'm Janice Denton, and I am a resident of Hopewell, Ward Five. And I just want to reiterate really what's been said tonight. I started on council in two thousand and seventeen. But the last two years, when I was on council, I ended up in December, the thirty-first of twenty-four, I saw more hate, and I'd hate to use that word, but I saw hate on this council. And I've never seen anything like it. And I'm standing here tonight that some of you know exactly what I'm talking about. You had a vendetta against our city manager. Some of you even campaigned on that to get elected. And then that wasn't enough, you spent the next two years.
Amen.
Doing everything you can to make her look bad. And what do I see tonight? We're right on track. She's got, she's came here, she got us straight, she worked with the Robert Bob Group, she's got twenty-one CAFRA done, twenty-two's gonna be done in June. She's done a good job. She's been responsive to you, the council. And how some of you could, the relentless attitudes that you had and have for this lady, I don't understand. And I will fight this as long as God gives me breath.
Debbie Randolph.
My name is Deb Randolph, I live in Ward One. I'm gonna start out by saying a famous quote. It says that the government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. This quote is absolutely a, an emphasis on the strength of government and where that strength comes from. And that is from your people and listening and forming a relationship to your people. And I'm embarrassed to say, as a previous counselor and somebody that's been following this city for twenty-five years, I'm embarrassed to see how you all have acted in the last three or four meetings to deny the citizens the right to speak. I don't care if you wanted to hear us or not, you owe the citizens that right to be able to speak and to speak out our minds. We may not know as much as you think you know, but we know what's going on. Or if we aren't seeing it in the light, as the previous gentleman said, then we're gonna assume what's happening. And you don't want us to assume. That's not good government to, for us to have to assume anything. The last thing I'll say is that my job is in compliance. I read manuals that thick on the federal government regulations. Doesn't stop you from still having a job and knowing what your job should be. I have looked at numerous amounts of Roberts Rules for when I was on council and when I wasn't, and I'd like to hear if there will ever be an answer coming from you all to bring the light to this. Why Rule Thirty-Six, which absolutely states that the absence of someone from a vote does not allow them to make the motion to reconsider? It absolutely says so. They're so dependent of us. So if we can get an answer on that, I would greatly appreciate it. And I'm at least glad you're letting some of us speak tonight. Thank you.
Mark Burrows.
Good evening, my name's Mark Burrows, I live in Ward, uh, Three. I'm not as eloquent as these gentlemen back here, but what I will say is I'm standing before you to publicly request that the corrupt and cowardly four resign effective immediately from all public servant positions due to a tragic loss of competence. The four of you have shown your willingness to betray your constituents and vote in line with your own motives rather than adhering to the constituents' desires. You have proven multiple times that you are not fit nor competent, and that you lack the integrity to lead this city out of the darkness that your foolishness has created. I am also calling for the city attorney to resign, in his own words, being not legally competent to advise the council. You have only fertilized the seed of corruption that these others have planted. I am also filing a formal complaint against city employee Arnold Day for his contemptuous comments verbally insulting the citizens that he works for. By calling a citizen a girl, he insulted that man, while insinuating that to be a female is somehow inferior. Since you have a history of doing nothing as a council, I will be submitting a FOIA request to ensure that he is disciplined accordingly, preferably fired. You five should have the mental capacity to realize that the best thing you can do for this city is to leave it. Call it your last act, great act of service if you need to. Also, the grass around the building, it's fourteen inches tall and in violation of Hopewell City Code. Y'all will come after any one of us.
Amen.
For the same reason. Furthermore, some of y'all need to stop dithering with your fingers and pay attention to what's going on around you. You're already embarrassing enough. Knock it off.
We have Travis Burrows.
I am not a, a well-spoken person nor a, uh, outspoken person. I do not like crowds, but I found it important to speak. The audacity of y'all is disgusting. To sit here and nod your heads while he says a beautiful prayer like y'all practice what he preaches. You're a plague, you're crooked, you're disgusting, outright atrocious. The best thing y'all can do at this point is just quit, resign, leave. I don't wanna see none of y'all in here. It's disgusting. Beyond that, you're, you're, you're just a cancer to Hopewell. Y'all want nothing but to line y'all's pockets and to make this city worse. I hope y'all decide to cut y'all selves off from this place, and I really hope and pray I see all four of y'all in handcuffs one day.
Shirley Hummel.
He didn't directly name anybody as the real state.
Shirley Hummel.
Did not give a threat. It was a hope.
Becky Anders. Becky Anders. Stephen Smith. Oh, sorry, Becky Anders.
Um, my name is Becky Anders and um. I used, I live in, I mean, I live in Hopewell about almost five years and it's disgusting. These homeless people hanging around the library, they, they use the bathroom around the library outside. I seen it. And it's disgusting. I wish y'all could do something about the homeless people. They need to leave out of Hopewell, go somewhere else. They're really nasty.
Hey, 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 everybody. She was polite when everyone else talked. Let her say her piece.
Mr. Bissette, the next speaker. We have Stephen Smith.
I'm in New York, Johnny Pardon. I've, I've been coming here for about six months. I hear y'all complain about money every time I come up here. And then I turn around and see a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of just bad decisions. When I'm at home, if I need a pair of work boots and we need something to pay the bills, the bills get paid before I get boots. And you people ain't putting your priorities where they need to be. And like I said, the only thing I don't know what to do, but I, I would suggest you get the state of Virginia here. People ain't doing their jobs, they need to be gone. They can't make a decision on something, they need to be gone. Thank you.
Sarah Fuller. Excuse me, Sharah Fuller, I apologize.
Fine. I, I get it often. It's okay. Uh, good evening, council and citizens. My name is Sharah Fuller. I live in Ward Five with Ms. Day. I come before the city time and time again, reminding citizens, including council, of the importance of our neighborhood watch meetings and when they occur. I do this again. I say this again, that neighborhood watch meetings are happening every month. I have invited all counselors, even the attorney and the new city manager. I've invited everyone out to our neighborhood watch meetings. I understand that, and I've learned that two or more counselors makes it a public meeting. I understand the situation surrounding that. But I've still asked at least one show up. I do want to give props to Mr. Gaston in his, in his absence. He would come to every single ward's neighborhood watch meeting, every ward's neighborhood watch meeting. He never missed one and even if he stayed for five minutes, he came, he spoke, he supported. But he didn't do that on, on city's time, he did that on his time. I also want to give props to Mr. Crocker and to Mr. Gomes because they both came out to neighborhood watch meetings. And they spoke to citizens and answered questions that people were asking instead of using the Facebook misinformation highway. Because we know that that's what Facebook becomes, is this misinformation highway. But uh, two weeks ago when we were in this council chambers before, I stood here crying because what I watched was so disheartening. I have a twelve year old who goes to Carter G. Woodson that I pulled him out and made him homebound because of the behaviors of another parent. Who was threatening my son, driving past my house daily, using explicitives, saying how she would harm my son. The law isn't on our behalf to say that she can't do that because she had to come through with a well articulated threat with the means to be able to execute it. So I, as the parent, had to make a decision because otherwise these lovely men and women behind me was gonna take me to jail because I was gonna handle business on behalf of my child. I stand ten toes behind my children and I love my family and I support them daily. But I had to reach out to senators and delegates and other people because our city isn't doing their part. What I'm seeing is a lot of, oh, there's smoke over here, but there's a burning fire over here and we're sending a fire truck over here. But there's a burning building over here. We're putting our attention in places that it doesn't need to be. I've watched Brittany Williams do a darn good job and I apologize, I, I know that that may not be the best language, so she did a great job. But I stuck, come before y'all month after month as a neighborhood watch captain and I can barely get a little bit of credit. Debbie Randolph is one. We also have Larry Sears. This past month, Halima Shepherd Crawford was made a neighborhood watch captain for Mr. Ellis, uh, Council Ellis's ward. We're asking you to come be present and we're asking for our voice to be heard. Right now, my voice isn't the loudest and on any given day, I'm not the loudest voice in the room. But I'm gonna keep banging this loud gong until you hear people that you were voted in by us. You were voted in by us. And as I've said time and time again, I really pray for y'all. I don't pray for you in a negative way. I really do pray for y'all. Because I imagine that sitting in that seat, it's not easy getting words thrown at you and different things. But what I'm saying is we're here and we're asking to be heard. We're asking for you to see some of our point of view and we know that diamonds come from being made under pressure. Well, you can't get pressure, you can't build into a diamond if you're sitting with folks who make you feel comfortable. You gotta talk to the people and deal with the people who are gonna challenge you to be better. You know this, Mr. Pardon, I'm sorry, you know this because in the military, they push you to be your best version. They take you outside of your comfort zone, but sitting amongst comfortable people is only gonna build complacency. And that's what I'm seeing in this city. It's a bunch of complacent behavior and it's becoming more ignorant and I'm asking you to stop. I'm asking you to stop. And I understand my three minutes are up and I apologize, but I'm asking y'all to please be better. Really, be better.
Ed Hauser.
I'm Ed Hauser, Ward Five. I'm gonna be a little bit more tame than I was here May the first. Maybe I can see a little bit more to me, but I'm gonna tell you what. What I did last through thoroughly turned my stomach. I sat here and watched four counselors deny their constituents to be able to speak. We elected y'all so we could speak, so you could be the voice of us. And when you can't hear our voice, you're not speaking for us, you're speaking for you. Which y'all did by the termination of a no reason termination for Brittany Williams and Cassette Manicker was disgusting. Them two individuals has put their heart and soul in this community to bring stuff up to standards. And y'all go sit here because of personal vendettas and we grouped up, let's fire them. You know, I'm not gonna say what it looks like, but we know what it looks like. And I'm disgusted at all four y'all. And we, the people of Hopewell, don't think y'all four actually should represent us. So it would be nice if all four y'all could tend y'all's resignations immediately.
We have no more signups. We have time for one more. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that did not sign that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, or sir?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name's Wayne Parsons. I'm from Ward One. This is only my second time being here as city council. I'd like to speak to you about one issue, this paving project. I don't understand why this paving project is starting in Mansion Hills. The only traffic in Mansion Hills are the citizens and residents in Mansion Hills. One street is only a circle around a house. A section of that new asphalt job was just completed a year ago by a contractor that put in the curb and gutter. And it's been milled back out to be re-asphalte. When you ride down City Point, see how many times your front, you had to go get your front end lined up because that street is beat all to pieces. Same thing on Mesa. I'm not gonna talk about it no more. I've talked to one of y'all about the problems in, in Public Works. Y'all know it's a leech on the city finances, it's riffed with inadequacy. And people who are doing things for their own agenda and not the people of Hopewell. I've spoken to another of you about this same thing. I ain't heard a word. You, Mr. Mayor, a former state senator sent you a letter asking you or suggesting that you talk to me. I ain't heard nothing from you. I live a block over.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
All right. Good evening, members of council, Jasmine Gore, Ward Four. Um, I was not gonna speak today, but after seeing my peers speak, the former counselors, I decided to comment as well. Um, as a former mayor and the immediate past vice mayor, I have to say that I was disheartened to see literature about taking the city back. I didn't step down from council after committing my life for twelve years to improve the city for that type of rhetoric. And to see the community in up in arms about what's happened within the last few meetings. I was the first African American to represent Ward Four and I did so honorably. And I have to say that remarks like that is not what Hopewell should stand for. I also want to give credit again for Dr. Minkler. Everyone here can give her a round of applause because again, we would not have our audience on track to get a policy for not for her efforts. I also want to thank Sharah for mentioning, um, the former assistant manager, Mr. Gaston, because he resigned because his position was about to be unfunded in the next month. So I know we're talking about Dr. Minkler and Brittany, but let's not forget about Mr. Gaston as well. Then I also want to mention, um, there are also conflicts of interest that are not being brought to light in terms of voting for salary increases. For personal gain and also family members. Not to mention, we do need an answer in regards to that vote because it is improper for someone to bring it up. And then I also want to say, in closing, Council Holloway, you are absolutely correct. Motion of points of personal privilege do not have a motion behind it and they cannot be stopped. In addition to that, when you made your request to have it addressed at this meeting, it was a separate meeting. So that ruling, whatever it was called, is invalid as well. Then I will also say, your petition to have your item on the agenda and it being removed improperly did violate Robert's rules and our council rules. So continue to fight for what's right and make sure you address all these inequities in the council setting for public to see what's happening because this is an abuse of power.
All right, we're moving on to our public hearing. Ms. Jordan.
Oh, yeah, we're not a citizen. Thirty minutes, not yet.
Thirty, thirty minutes have, have elapsed.
Thirty minutes has elapsed.
Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
I thought it hadn't left. The only reason it would have lapsed is because of additional time we voted in. We still have about two minutes left.
Thirty minutes has elapsed.
What time did we start? What time did we start, Mr. Mayor?
It's been over, um.
It hasn't been.
Yes, it has.
I've been clocking the time. You cannot even tell me when it started. There are still two more minutes on there.
You can always make a motion to extend the period if you'd like.
Uh, it's not even about extending the period. The time has not grown up.
Thirty minutes?
And what time was that thirty minutes started?
Thirty minutes elapsed early on in, um, in. Thirty minutes elapsed early on in, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Gore's statements.
I'd like to make a motion that we give the lady three minutes to allow her to speak so that we can hear from our citizens. Uh, if we represent their best interests. We cannot represent their best interests.
I second.
Uh, without being able to hear their interest.
All right, motion's been made by Council Holloway and seconded by Vice, uh, excuse me, Mr. Harris. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing no lights, roll call, please. Just, just one point. This is, this is a motion to waive the rules and extend public comment by one more speaker. Is that correct? By one person, correct. And it was Council Holloway seconded by Counselor Harris. Okay, Counselor Harris.
How y'all, how y'all, how y'all change my motion? How you change my motion?
That's what, that's what we just, you just said.
Oh, yeah, but you said waive the rules and so we wait. Anyway, I'll, I'll go with that. Yes.
Okay. So Counselors Mayor Pardon.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Um, Darlene Thompson, Ward Six. I really don't even know where to start. Um, this, being disgusted is not even the word. You all have blatantly disrespected this city. You all sat there and act like one of your councilmen ran on your vote, your money. And another one ran on, I'm gonna give the people what they want. And nothing has not happened. What so many of you all are missing and I'm so glad to see you all here tonight. This council has actually swindled this city out of millions of dollars. When you hear Ms. Stacy say twenty four million dollars, that's twenty four million of you all's dollars. They inflated the budget last year by seven point two million dollars. And done an over assessment of you all's taxes.
Yeah, we know.
An over assessment of your taxes. So that's why those numbers are looking the way that they are looking. When you start talking about racism and what you have observed. You had a city councilman charged with seven hundred dollars of helping someone out with the repass. But this city council has gotten, got seven point two million dollars for the last three years from you all. Instead of them doing a reassessment of your property, what they did is kept that, increased the tax rate. And got another two million. So it was a total of like seven point two million dollars. It has not, it has not stopped. And if you all don't continue to come to these meetings, this is how each one of them vote. To come after our citizens. I just heard Stacy went over our budget. And she said it was, no, it was Chris, that said it was two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars left. From COVID relief funds. Okay, but that's the same money. If we say we need a leaf pickup, we don't have it. But that's something, that is something that Johnny Pardon wants that Riverwalk finished.
Twenty seconds.
So, yeah, that's what he wants, is the Riverwalk finished. So they find the money to do what they want to do. You all cannot stop coming to these meetings because it is affecting our pockets. Sewage collection, trash collection, then an over assessment of your real estate and an over assessment. This is what has been happening in this city. And I constantly have to get up here and say the same thing and you get those stone faces that, uh, won't do anything for you all.
Ms. Thompson, your time is up.
Can I have a point of information? I'd like, I'd like a point of information of Mr. City Attorney in regards to, uh, number one, uh, last, last meeting and the February's meeting. Uh, this is a different question. Uh, you said in fact that Counselor Ellis could have voted in regards to conflict of interest. Uh, if he was not voting on his own personal, uh, matters, but in the best interest of the public. Counselor, uh, Harris had voted, uh, to hear the interest of the public. And Mr. Counselor Ellis voted against hearing the interest of the public by replying no, uh, very loudly. So would it indeed in fact be correct in saying that he would have had to been voting against Dr. Minkler for his personal privilege? If indeed in fact, he could not represent the public's best interest? When the public at the time was included directors, employees of the city and constituents of the city whom he denied hearing their interest. So how could he then represent that he duh, he had done it in the best interest of the city? Does that not have a conclusion to us, to show us that he was not in fact voting on the behalf of the citizens? But again, in his personal best interest?
Counselor, if I may, this is, this is.
One minute and eleven seconds I took, so I have a remaining.
This, this is going to take. This, this is going to take a moment to respond. May, may I?
Certainly.
So this returns to a topic, uh, that we raised on the May first agenda. And in response to a question you asked me then and, and it's relevant here today, I had mentioned that, uh, that I am not legally competent to speak on Koya questions. What, what I mean by that statement is that the Conflict of Interest Act gives, not to me, but to the Conflict of Interest Advisory Council, the authority to pass on whether a councillor on this council has a conflict of interest. It is not that I am unfamiliar with or not expert in the Conflict of Interest Act. I am simply not given by statute the authority to pass on whether a councillor has a conflict. For that reason, I cannot answer your question.
So I call to question for point of information, Councillor Ellis. The question before the people today is, did you and do you feel as if you are and did vote against Dr. Minkler in the best interest of the people without hearing? Can you say that you indeed voted in the best interest of the people, citizens, employees, including directors but not limited to? Did you vote on their behalf in their best interest while denying to hear their best interest, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I, my advice is that this is, this would constitute a new item on the agenda and council could entertain it, but it would require a motion to pass to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
So this will constitute not as a question of information?
This is, this is, this is not a point of privilege or other, or other, um, procedural motion.
I'd like to proceed with the motion on the floor as stated by the city councillor.
So the, the motion on the floor is to add an agenda item for, for Councillor Holloway to ask this question to Councillor Ellis?
Absolutely.
A second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Apologies, uh, councillors, I'm acting as clerk at the same time. It'll be just a second for me to catch up.
That's all right. Go ahead. So in, in...
No, I apologize.
Go ahead for Mr. Bissett.
We have a, we have a motion from Councillor Holloway and we have a second from Councillor Harris. The roll call, councillor...
He asked for discussion and I said, yes, and I have...
I apologize.
Uh, the discussion is, is stated to, uh, to ask him this question and to also, uh, note that, uh, in additional emails and conversations with the, uh, city attorney that he stated to me, we're all equal under this law. That when I put on a councillor's request, that I was not on the prevailing side and he was not, I'm discussing this topic. So he was not on the prevailing side because he was absent from the vote. And because he was absent from the vote at the time, he would have not been on the prevailing side to bring the vote back up at this time. So with that in mind, I will say on record tonight, and I'll let you know that yes, I'm going forward tomorrow morning with our lawsuits and I'm happy to do so. Please mark tonight in a face that you could be not only facing these silver suits, but a class, uh, one misdemeanor with your thoughts in mind as you answer this question to this vote. I digress.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
No.
Councillor Ellis.
No.
Councillor Day.
Question, can, can, can Councillor Ellis vote on this matter?
Since it's about him.
We're in the middle of a roll call. This is, this is, this is not a question, this is not itself a question about his, his, um...
But it pertains to him.
Right, but this is, this is just the question of whether the topic can be added to the agenda.
Correct, the topic about...
Councillor Ellis, Councillor Ellis can vote on this.
Okay, that is your preliminary decision.
Councillor Holloway.
Uh, yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, moving on to our public hearings.
I'm not, I'm not finishing my point of information. I have, uh, I have a minute and fifty seconds remaining. Uh, so I appear to the people, uh, that you hear and you see, where your city councillors stand tonight. This is indeed without question a matter of racism. It, and I'll say it, I call a spade a spade. It is a matter of racism. It is disgusting. It is sad and this is where we are today. I call out these four and that point led in a coup, including the hiring of our city attorney in which, in which they set out to hire the city attorney and was about to pay him six thousand dollars additionally to have his Great Danes watched. And they tried to sneak this in the contract but would not, uh, give our previous city councillor, I mean, city attorney who was qualified, not even any additional pay. Again, down with the lines of racism, but there is more to come. And I pray for mercy for us all and grace for us all in our plight to bring you down. I called for unity and I still call for unity. But like I said, even in unity and calling for peace, we are more than ready for this spiritual warfare session.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Point of information, since I have fifteen seconds left, is Dr. Minkler still...
We're on the public hearing right now.
I have fifteen seconds left in a point of information and I'm requesting for the remainder of my point of information. Is Dr. Minkler still legally the city manager, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, do I understand that this is a request for my opinion as parliamentarian as to whether the vote on May first to fire the city manager was effective?
Not May first because of the previous statements from the February's council according, uh, accordingly since that we brought up in, like you said, in the May first meeting reconsideration. And it was an item of reconsideration that's addressed by Robert's rules. And as the former councillor has stated, Rule thirty-six, is she then the legal city manager, sir? So should we pay her along with the interim city manager?
Your time is up.
My, but my question has still stood.
I know, but your three minutes are up.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
My time was up.
Ms. Jordan.
His question, he, you didn't...
Ms. Jordan.
I asked a question and didn't allow him to answer the question.
Go ahead, Ms. Jordan with the, uh, public hearing, please.
Are you, are you not to answer that question that I had already completed?
No, your time is up.
The, the meeting on.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
He has that authority to do so?
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of the Council. This is the public hearing for the...
We want justice, you say how?
We want justice, you say how?
Reinvestigating Dr. Minkler now.
We instate what you make now.
We want justice, you say how?
We want justice, you say how?
Is there a motion to remove the protesters from this meeting?
We instate what you make now.
The motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner, seconded by myself. Roll call, please.
Hopewell is worth fighting for.
Councillor Harris.
Five, six, seven, eight.
The roll call cannot be taken. Please remove the protesters.
CNN Council reinstates. I state my privilege of protesting on behalf of the citizens that I represent.
Go ahead, uh, uh, Jordan.
Without your authority to move forward, you are out of line, Mr. Mayor. I asked a question and you have surpassed, again, a reinstate personal privilege which you cannot vote against. So tonight I invoke my personal privilege to talk. You don't have the authority, you don't have the authority to oversee...
Ms. Jordan, please start the public hearing.
Anything that I say, you don't have that authority, sir, when I am invoking my personal privilege. I'm invoking my personal privilege, sir. I'm invoking my personal privilege, sir.
Mr. Rogers, please instruct the finance director to start the public hearing.
Thank you. Um, this is the proposed 26th operating and capital budget. The purpose of today's presentation. Mr. revised city council with an overview and highlight of the proposed 26th operating and capital budget.
Don't touch me, sir. That is a, that's assault.
Councillor Harris.
My name is Holloway.
Excuse me.
You are, you just touched me. You assaulted me. Do not touch me, sir.
Please go ahead.
The development of the proposed 26th operating capital budget is...
Did you just grant me, sir? You consented to the...
Councillor Holloway. Councillor Holloway. Please sit down. Please sit down. You have been overruled by the parliamentarian. Please continue, Ms. Jordan.
The framework of the proposed 26th operating and capital budget is propose an operational budget of two hundred and twenty-two million, seven seventy-two, five fourteen. Total of all funds required for operations of city services. There has been six hundred and fifty thousand dollars identified for capital at this time against a ten point five million in capital requests that we received. And we have been able to allocate two hundred and fifty thousand for reserves. An increase of one point nine million for all funds or point ninety percent over twenty-five. Proposed general operating fund recommended funding, seventy million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, sixty-eight.
Excuse me. You are out of order, Mr. Burrows. You are out of order. Is there a motion to remove Mr. Burrows from the meeting? I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Councillor Harris. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Councillor Ellis. Councillor Day. Councillor Stokes. Councillor Holloway.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
All right.
Motion passes.
Officers, please make sure that he has left the building. All right, move, can, all right, Ms. Jordan, please continue with the public hearing.
An increase of two point two or three point two over four, uh, fifty-five. The baseline budget remained the same from twenty-five. There was a three percent COLA increase for employees as well as the implementation of the class and compensation study for public safety as well in parks and rec. And an increase to the city's overall healthcare of about five hundred thousand dollars. The school's operating funding is consistent with twenty-four and twenty-five funding levels. There has been no draw from unassigned fund balance to balance the budget and no proposed tax, uh, adjustments to the tax rates. Slide five is the tax rates for the city of Hopewell. We had our revenue committee. Again, the proposed revenues for the budget for all funds is two hundred and twenty-two million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, five fourteen. Expenditures match revenues. General fund is seventy million, two sixty-eight, oh, sixty-eight over, um, sixty-eight, three oh-two, two sixty-six, one point nine million. Here's a breakdown of the transfers from the general fund for VPA, schools, CSA, recreation, capital projects, economic development, self-insurance, debt service, healthy families for a total of twenty million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, five fifty-four. Highlights of the proposed 26th budget, the proposed budget includes the following. The class and compensation implementation, three percent funding COLA for DSS and constitutional officers as well as three percent for city departments. There is roughly a five hundred thousand dollar health and care cost increase that has been absorbed by the city. There has been new positions, aquatics, program manager, assistant city attorney, as well as three firefighters. School operating funding level at thirteen point five million. Mandated services, funding for social services as well as CSA. Limited CIP funding, but we will continue to refine the budget and any potential other revenue sources to identify CIP for twenty-six. The following is a five-year CIP request that we received, the overall CIP for the city of forty-seven million, three hundred eighty thousand, seven seventy-five. The next step is today is our public hearing for the first reading of the city and schools budget as well as May twenty-seventh will be the second in adoption. Any questions? We also have the budget resolution for review. That will be read again on the twenty-seventh for the second reading for the budget.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Jordan? Um, only question that I have is, um, do we have that list yet of the, uh, pump stations?
No, we have a meeting scheduled next week, I believe it is, so we can review first.
Okay, great. And we do have the, I know we don't have the half a million dollars that we're setting aside in the rainy day fund, but this does include the two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, great. So we'll make sure that we're showing progress and everything. Um, all right. Go ahead and open up the public hearing.
We don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. So go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, I know that this is the first reading, uh, Mr. Rogers and Mr. Bissett. Do we need a motion on this or we just approve it at the next meeting?
At the next meeting, at this meeting, you, you, you lack a sufficient number of councillors to, to, uh, approve it. Now, you normally can approve something on the first reading.
Okay.
But you need five councillors to do that.
Okay. All right. Moving on to our second public hearing for the night. For a few items.
Got a few more. I see this as a good sign. That means we're busy, things are happening.
Mm-hmm.
So my first, uh, public hearing regards to conditional use permit for the use of an accessory apartment as a, uh, as an accessory dwelling, uh, parcel zero-two-four, zero-eight, nine-zero. The applicant is Esteban Perez. This particular property is located Ward One in Zone R Two. Again, the request is to utilize an accessory structure as an accessory apartment. Uh, you can see the maps here with general location and then the aerial of this property. You may remember this from a work session, uh, last month. Again, some photographs of the, uh, property in question. The structure on the right is the accessory structure that, uh, is being, it will be rehabilitated into an accessory dwelling. And there's a elevation image of what it will look like. Again, we got some additional drawings here just to give you a foresighted view. Uh, the primary structure itself is also under rehabilitation. So staff's analysis is that the, the R Two district does permit accessory dwelling units with an approved conditional use permit. The property is large enough to accommodate sufficient off-street parking for both the primary structure and the accessory dwelling unit. Property owner is, uh, held to strict requirements for the use of that ADU and they must be reestablished annually. That's codified in our zoning ordinance. And again, the rehab, uh, includes both structures. Uh, the criteria that's set forth in the, in the, uh, ordinance states that, of course, you can apply for the CUP to u- utilize an accessory structure as an apartment. The applicant must certify that the apartment will be occupied by a related family member fifty-five years of age or older or handicapped. The applicant must acknowledge that upon vacation by such family member that the building may long, may no longer be used as an apartment unless another family member meets the qualifications. And again, um, the applicant must demonstrate sufficient off-street parking. Uh, we did receive one written comment from a citizen, uh, requesting off-street parking and fencing as conditions of approval. And the complete, uh, written comment was attached to the staff report if you wanted to read the whole thing. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit request uh, with the following conditions. That the occupant of the accessory dwelling unit must be related to a family member who was an occupant of the primary structure. who was an occupant of the primary structure, not necessarily based off of ownership of the property. Uh, driveway will be, of asphalt or concrete will be installed, tree canopy of twenty percent, foundation plating's at the accessory structure, and that the rehabilitated accessory structure will be in substantial conformance with the designs that I've, uh, shown you in the presentation. Planning Commission, um, echoed staff's recommendations. They also added, uh, two additional uh, conditions, and that would be number six and seven. Number six states that the ADU will remain unoccupied until the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And number seven is that the family person mu- must occupy the ADU and not sublet to a non-qualified person or persons. Planning Commission recommends approval, three to zero. I'm available for any questions. This is a public hearing, so asking, um, for action once the public hearing is finished.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Ward before we open the public hearing? Seeing none. Public hearing is now open. Uh, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up for public hearing.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this that has, well, that did not sign up? No? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. All right. This time, is there a motion to approve the conditional, uh, conditional use permit request for accessory dwelling unit two-one-nine, South Sixteenth Avenue as presented?
So move.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for qualification on which set of conditions you would recommend, or you will be approving, either staff's recommendations or the Planning Commission's recommendations that have the two additional?
I like those two additional.
Yeah.
Okay. So recommend with Planning Commission's?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Seeing no lights. Roll call, please.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Who was the motion? Who was the second?
Uh, it was made by Vice Mayor Joyner, and then I believe it was seconded by, uh, Counselor Day.
Thank you. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to public hearing number three.
Thank you. Third public hearing this evening relates to a rezoning request, also known as a zoning map amendment. Uh, this relates to two parcels on Cypress Street, Parcel zero-four-two, zero-one-six-five and zero-four-two, zero-one-seven-zero. It consists of lots seven R and nine R, block four, Highland Park subdivision. The request is to rezone from B-three to R-four. Applicant is Louis Stevenson. These properties located on the, uh, here in, uh, Ward six. Existing zoning is B-three. The request is to go to R-four. Um, the usual maps, general location, and then the specific properties in question are, uh, highlighted in blue here. The reason for the request is that B-three Commercial District requires setbacks that essentially would create a four-foot wide developable area on these parcels. Uh, the two lots do conform to the R-four lot standards in both width and total square footage. And, uh, there was a previous attempt to rezone these properties, um, back in the early two thousands so that some townhomes could be constructed there. That rezoning failed because neighbors came out, uh, and spoke in favor of rezoning for the purpose of single-family home construction, which our current applicant is, has proffered. The additional proffers would be, of course, the, uh, single-family dwelling construction and our standard CUP typical type, um, conditions. The roof overhangs, tree canopy, the driveway, foundation plating's, and brick on all four sides. These have been proffered by the applicant. Staff supports the rezoning. Uh, its current zoning is B-three, really, um, makes the development of these properties challenging. Uh, the applicant's proffers are consistent with conditions typically approved by council for CUPS. Our, the R-four district is compatible with adjacent properties. And, uh, primarily, and I would say most importantly, the comprehensive plan specifically identifies this specific area and states the sub-area is well-located and adequately sized to accommodate traditional neighborhood revitalization effort that could yield a range of medium-to-high-density housing. So for those purposes, um, staff is recommending approval. We've not, did not receive any public comment. And Planning Commission, uh, also recommends approval, um, to, uh, rezone from B-three to R-four and to accept the proffer submitted by the applicant. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for, uh, Mr. Ward? Okay. Seeing none. Going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to, I assume no one's signed up?
No one's signed up, no.
Uh, judging by the audience right now.
There, in fact, is nobody signed up for any of these public hearings.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Okay. Seeing none. Going to go ahead and close it. All right. This time, is there a motion to approve the rezoning request for parcel zero-four-two, zero-one-six-five and zero-four-two, zero-one-seven-zero, Cypress Street, B-three to B-four, um, as, uh, recommend, oh, excuse me, as presented, uh, tonight?
B-three to R-four?
Oh, to R-four, I'm sorry. And do you want us to qualify with the conditions that the applicant?
That you accept the applicant's proffers.
Okay. And that we accept the applicant's, uh, proffers. Okay? All right. Uh, motion's been made by Counselor Ellis, and I'll second it. Seeing no lights for discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, public hearing number four.
Next one, try to mix it up a little bit. We've got a right-of-way vacation request. Uh, relates to, uh, a property that, um, equates to three-nineteen Maryland Avenue and is adjacent to parcel zero-two-four, zero-five-one-zero and zero-two-four, zero-four-three-zero. So this particular vacation request, uh, it's between those two parcels, as I just mentioned. The, uh, approximate size of this public right-of-way that is being requested is five thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet, located Ward two. It's Zoned R-two. Here's a map that shows in red the portion that is being requested to be vacated. Uh, it's an interior public right-of-way. Um, our research has not indicated as to even why it exists there. But the applicant is West End Presbyterian Church, and by virtue of this right-of-way existing, it's actually inhibiting their plans, uh, to potentially, uh, expand the church. Uh, there were no comments from other city departments who reviewed the request. Staff recommends, um, the approval of the vacation request. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Ward? Okay. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Since we didn't have anyone signed up, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none. Going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the right-of-way vacation request of three-nineteen Maryland Avenue? Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Um, I just want to make one small comment. Um, this is actually really positive to see that we have a church, you know, in Hopewell that is growing, and also a school, um, that's also growing as well, that's, you know, potentially going to need expansion. So this is really good things to see coming before us. All right. Roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, public hearing number five. Mr. Bennett.
Fair, my, uh, mayor, vice mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity. I, um, I would like to just comment on the previous public hearing, um, as it relates to that vacation right-of-way. This is a total historical fact. So Reverend Bill Hill in his book talks about the acquisition of that parcel that was owned by the city of Hopewell in nineteen forty-two, where there was a tower on that property. That right-of-way is how the city accessed that tower. And the really amazing miracle about that was they were able to purchase the property from the city to build that gymnasium so that kids could roller skate in there. And, uh, it, they got the materials and the permit release right before the federal government stopped all, um, of the new construction in America for the war effort. So it's really an amazing, um, story that's in Bill Hill's biography, which is pretty neat. Um, so anyway, that's the reason that right-of-way exists. Um, so I'm here tonight, uh, to talk to you about another, uh, really exciting historical, um, project, uh, preservation project. The action here for this public hearing is an exchange of land, and this is a, really a formalization, uh, the last step to formalize something that we started back in August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. And, uh, that was, uh, when the city of Hopewell, uh, basically did a support agreement to the Hopewell Economic Development Authority for the purchase of a historical site uh, on Reverend C.W. Harris Street. That was, um, that was formerly the, uh, Harry James School and, uh, originally built in nineteen forty-two. Um, and, and specifically the preservation of a nineteen sixteen structure, uh, where Reverend Samuel, uh, Perry, uh, began teaching in nineteen sixteen in the, in the YMCA building. Uh, eighty African-American students, uh, because there was no education for them at the time. So what we're going to do tonight, when you vote on this land exchange, is we're going to actually now, um, legally, the city of Hopewell is going to receive the possession of that historic schoolhouse. And we're gonna, uh, we're already starting, matter of fact, on Monday, the asbestos tile, uh, will be removed out of it. Uh, we received a, a grant, uh, last year, Virginia Brownfield's grant, to make that, that property safe. We're going to go through the process of, um, replacing the windows and, and doing the improvement so that we can open it up as a, uh, a destination historical site to celebrate the African-American history of education here in the city of Hopewell. So it's a very positive thing that we're doing. So, uh, what you're going to prove tonight, hopefully, is that, uh, you're going to prove this deed, uh, which does the boundary line adjustment, and we're going to give the Economic Development Authority, we're going to give them the, the land behind it, which is where the ball field was, to connect with the rest of the property. In exchange, we're going to get the African-American schoolhouse for preservation. And then the Economic Development Authority is going to continue on essentially seeking the development of the, that, that other property while we preserve and, uh, open and curate the, um, the Davisville, uh, historic schoolhouse. So that's the background and the summary, um, and the deed is attached, um, along with the advertisement for this public hearing. And, uh, there's, there's no money involved. We're not paying anything. This is just an exchange. Money was, uh, was transferred back in, in two thousand and twenty-three, uh, associated with this, this transaction. So I'm happy to take any questions before, uh, we open the public hearing.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Bennett? Okay. Seeing none. Going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. We didn't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? No? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the deed of boundary? Okay. Y'all must want to get out tonight. Um, is there a motion to approve the deed of a boundary line adjustment and combination between the city of Hopewell, Virginia, and the Economic Development Authority of the city of Virginia, EDA, for the tax ID zero-four-eight-zero-three-four-zero and tax ID four-eight-zero-three-three-nine as presented tonight? And the motion was made by Counselor Harris and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just got one thing to say. I didn't rush that motion like that because I was ready to get out of here so quick. Uh, I, I was glad that we're doing something because my mother and father went to school in this building. And so did I. Okay? So I'm glad that we are doing something with this building. It is historical, truly.
You just wanted to make the motion, that's all.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna beat you out.
All right. Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Now, Mr. Ward, you're back again.
Yep, last time for me this evening. Um, and this, we'll, we'll finish this off on a good note because, um, this evening, I'm presenting to you a subdivision of property up, uh, right down the street from here, at seven hundred South Sixth Avenue. Parcel zero-six-one, zero-one-six-one. Uh, this parcel, uh, general location map on the left and the aerial view on the right. So it's the, the parcel in question is at the inner, or at the corner of South Sixth Avenue and Elm Street. Uh, it's the, the vacant portion that, uh, fronts Elm is being subdivided off so that Rio Suarez Foods LLC can build a new, uh, food distribution center there. The applicant is Delta Citation LLC. The existing zoning is B-three, and the, uh, size is four-point-five-five acres. This will be, uh, used for the construction of a distribution warehouse in Ward two. This is the subdivision. Again, uh, your, uh, staff has reviewed this thoroughly, and this is the final plat uh, being presented to you tonight, so it meets all requirements of the city's subdivision ordinance. So your vote this evening is primarily ministerial. Again, the plat meets all the requirements, and there really is no reason to not approve it. Staff recommends approval, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Seeing no lights for questions. Is there a motion to approve the subdivision plat as presented?
So move.
For seven hundred South Sixth Avenue? All right. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by, uh, Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights. Roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, report to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, council, the hour is late. This is my, uh, this is my second, uh, second week. I can just tell you that, uh, I'm in a period of exploration and assessment. I've had an opportunity to meet with, uh, each of you to identify, um, areas that you're interested in and you want action on. I've been meeting with, uh, department heads to, um, understand what's happening in their agencies and identifying, uh, major projects. In my conversations with you, I've identified some major projects and areas of focus that we will turn our attention to, to get moving. Some things that have been around a while, some things that are emergency and need to, uh, move forward in order to avoid more severe consequences. And those will be our priorities. I will be back to you when I finish my round with the department heads, with, uh, my list and my program for, for moving forward. And, um, I can tell you that, uh, great focus will be on making sure that the audits keep moving. Uh, secondly, checking off this list of, uh, to-dos from, from the audit in terms of, uh, areas of weakness that we need to focus on. And thirdly, uh, the Robert Bob group has identified a number of areas that we need to work on, so we will turn our attention to that. So the next time you see that, there'd be a list of projects with timelines, uh, and, 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 uh, timetables and tasks to, to, to get us moving.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, reports of the city attorney?
No reports, uh, Mr. Mayor, however, uh, just a note on the items upcoming at the end of this meeting. If council is amenable to doing so, they may vote on this on block.
Okay.
If any member of council wishes to separate out one of these and not vote on block, just say so. When we reach that item.
Yeah, I'm fine with doing block.
What are we voting on? These are, uh, last month, uh, Mayor Parton had asked for reallocation of some of his discretionary funds into his award fund so that he could use it for a particular, um, I guess, nonprofit project. Um, there are proposed, um, there are proposed, uh, resolutions here doing similarly for all other members of council. So basically it's taking your discretionary funds, putting them into your award fund so that you have an augmented award fund before July first that you can use for whatever project you would normally be able to use your award funds for.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to push everything into the award fund and we have the application that we fill out in this group.
Precisely, so your communication funds and then your travel funds, uh, as, as we discussed before, would be, if these pass, would be moved into your award fund, so then you would have a larger award fund before the end of the fiscal year that you can use, again, for any purpose that you would normally expect to be able to use your award funds for, it would just be an augmented amount.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve, um, the Ward one, two, four, five, six and seven, uh, reallocation of, um, I guess, communi-, you'd say?
Communications.
And, um.
And travel funds to award funds.
Okay.
There, there, there is a resolution for each of these separately in front of council.
Yeah, I was just going to say, as presented in the resolutions.
Precisely.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Uh, their resolutions will be here and, and, and if, if council votes on them and block and council, uh, approves them, they, they will be adopted as well.
I mean, it's my understanding they requested to do this, I mean.
That's correct. All, all, all counselors have asked our office to prepare such a resolution as I understand.
Okay.
We could just vote on theirs and do theirs on another day.
Yeah, or, yeah, or we can just wait to do theirs.
I mean, I, I presume if they've added them to the agendas because they, they, they want this done. I, doing it now, if, if it were done now, um, on a first reading with, with a vote of five, then of course the ability to use these funds in this way would attach now and everyone would have an additional half a month uh, to, to dispose of them as, as they want. Um, but ultimately that's, that's up to council whether to take them all up or, or wait for a second reading for some of them or wait for a second reading for all of them.
So what's the pleasure of council? Do you want to do them all or do you want to, uh, wait for Counselor Stokes and Holloway when they're present?
Oh, I mean, I mean, just show them where they.
Yeah, theirs is here.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I just.
Let's just go ahead and do it.
Okay.
If the, because we're, I, I apologize, counselors, because, because we're on first reading, if, if the vote were to fail tonight, it would just be taken up at the second reading.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, so we're just doing them all in block?
If that's the pleasure of council.
Okay. And I think you made the motion and then, did you second it?
I seconded.
Okay. Okay, seeing no lights for discussion, roll call please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting has been adjourned.